Six o'clock. I'd like to call meeting board. Stand up. We will do a meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Jo Ratanowski. Mary Jo Redcliffe.
Here.
Patty Jacobson.
Here.
Laurel Meek.
Here.
Amy Hoffman. Naomi Thundercloud.
Here.
Scott Barton.
Here. I'd like to verify that this is properly posted.
Yes.
Thank you. They open up for public comments if there are any? Seeing none. I'd like to move right into community engagement.
Excellent. So we have two people that we'd love to recognize. If I could have John Dick and Selena Lemieux come up. Looks like Dawson was not able to join us, but I'm going to talk collectively about him as well. So come on forward. So we wanted to highlight for the board an activity that started at our middle school last year through some fantastic work. And it started off with the boys first, with John Dick and Dawson McAndrews working together. And then by spring, we had a girls' talking circle started up, and Selena was a huge part of that. So the talking circles are, you certainly can explain it better than I can, but I'm just going to give you a rough summary. It is an optional choice for students in the middle school during their tiger time, so not instead of instruction and not during their lunch hour, so it doesn't, more kids are encouraged to participate. And they come together with these fantastic mentors who guide them through some storytelling and then some reflective conversation. And the participation has just been so incredibly positive. And so many of the middle school staff members have said how fantastic it is for those kids to have another caring adult in the building and a place that they know that they can go to if they have questions, concerns, and just a little extra guidance and mentorship. And so I'm more familiar with the boys' talking circle simply because I was part of that conversation initially, but in the beginning of the year laid out a whole plan for the topics that were going to be addressed throughout the year. And so it's not just randomness, come together, hey, what you want to talk about, but these guys are very thoughtful about picking conversations that are going to be meaningful and that the kids are really going to walk away with some enrichment for that time that they spent together. And so we know that you are donating your time to do that and your efforts, and we are so very, very, very appreciative of your willingness to do that. Is there anything that you wanted to say to highlight or to talk a little bit about the work that you're doing or some maybe one thing that you really appreciate about it or something like that?
I would just like to say that I really appreciate the opportunity. I want to say thank you to the district, to the board, to the Hoshknap Education Department, and specifically at the middle school, Ashley Wyble, and at the high school, Amanda Smagex, for both being very helpful in making sure that all of the times and the students were there and all that kind of stuff and keeping attendance with us, you know, just being very, very open and keeping that line of communication open with us. Thank you to Dawson and Selena. Thank you to Naomi. Thank you to Bethany Redbird, my supervisor, and Dr. Marcus Lewis for allowing us to be able to do this too. That's pretty much all I want to say. And I want to thank my kids and my family and the friends and community that have been supportive of what we're trying to do. So that's what I would like to say.
Fantastic. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Oh, please.
To be honest, and I appreciate that you recognized the others that were helpful in making this happen, but we've talked about this for years and it just never got off the ground because there wasn't the right people to make the connections with the kids and to follow it through. And so everyone else can build all the systems, but in the end, it takes really special people to connect with those kids and make it happen. So we are really, really appreciative of your work. So we have a certificate for each of you. And then the thunderous round of applause. Wait for it. Congratulations. Thank you so much. And congratulations. Thank you so much. There you are. And now a thunderous round of applause. If I could get your picture.
I have one question. Shall I?
Yes.
Is it just for Hoshknap students or are all students welcome?
It's open to the whole district, to all the kids and within the grade levels that we have. I think we were doing 7th and 8th in the middle school and then we were doing 9th through 12th in the high school.
Excellent. Any other questions for them?
Just like to make a comment. It's just, I think it's wonderful, like thinking outside the box. It's just what a wonderful way to get young men to communicate and open up and feel that it's okay to do that because for some guys, some young boys, it takes forever to learn those skills. Wonderful.
Awesome. We'll step up in front of that tiger thing, we'll take the picture, and then you can be on with what you need to say. We'll be right there after our meeting. Tiger back to school. Are they doing this for each?
Yeah. Because they're like.
Of course. They haven't seen it yet.
That was a lot. I'll talk about that later.
Did you ever see it?
Yeah. I did. Oh, yeah. I see that file on X.
I do. Thanks for that. Thanks. Deborah, can I give you Dawson McAndrews? And you can give it to him when you see him back. Would that work? We can do that later. Perfect. All right.
Moving on to get then grants.
Sure. So I put in one card from the Chrome Clinic, but I also wanted to highlight, we really have an amazing community when it comes to helping out with that back-to-school cost. And we know that those back-to-school suppliers get a little bit long, but there are so many agencies that want to be helpful. And so I put this one in there just as a note that the Chrome Clinic did a school supply drive, but I also wanted to highlight Purpose Financial does one, The Right Place did one, Pineview Care Center, and the Chrome Clinic. We recently have had just some conversation with another church group that in the past they've done school supplies, but they connected with somebody from the district and they suggested that perhaps the beginning of the year we get an awful lot of supplies, and so that wasn't a significant need at this time. And so they asked if they could collect some cash donations to add to an angel fund for our school lunch account balances, which was also very, very generous. And so wanted to highlight that as far as gifts. The one grant that does need some approval is the PRMG grant. This is the peer review mentor grant, and they are only awarded to consortiums. And so we have paired up with Alma Center and Melrose Mendoza the last couple of school years. The grant total is $16,750. We asked for more than that, but this is what we were allocated, and that is divided between all three buildings or all three districts. And so it is, you know, not a significant amount of money, but every amount helps. And so I would need approval for the acceptance of that grant.
I make a motion to approve the grants as presented.
One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Aye. opposed? Say no? Discussion for board self-evaluation.
So what I did from our last conversation is I just took the tool, hopefully corrected the spelling errors, and I didn't do a lot of reformatting yet. But what I did for this time, I just put how many people rated where so that you can, I didn't want to average it because that would get messy, and so you can kind of see where the responses lie. My understanding was the next time we want to, during board development, talk a little bit about some of the areas where perhaps we were rated a little bit lower. And we also wanted to add the narrative questions for the next time that we do the survey. But this is what you guys had turned in after our last one. I don't know if anyone has any notices or wonderings that you'd like to talk about or if there's anything surprising to you or...
The fact that we were rated ourselves lowest on was contacting our legislators and being proactive in that area. So maybe that's something we should focus on.
Yeah, there was three questions on that. And honestly, when you go through all the questions, it kind of was an inventory of the functions that some school boards regularly engage in. And so perhaps the first part is, do we think that as a board, it's important for us to touch into all of these areas? Or do we not feel like they are all necessary acts of school boards?
I think it would be good to whoever wasn't able to do it, if they could do it and get any of those totals.
Sure. I can certainly, we can get some copies made for everyone.
And then WS. Isn't it yearly, they have this meet and greet in Madison? I think we attended once a few years ago.
In Madison or is that?
At the Capitol. Meet at the Capitol.
Oh, I wasn't at that one. Sorry. Then you guys must have gone. Oh, with the legislators, yes. There's Day on the Hill, I think is what it's called, and they sponsor school boards from all over, right? And there's kind of a pre-meeting where they talk a little bit about some of the issues, give you perhaps some talking points, and then meet.
So it's a yearly thing if we chose or...
But those aren't legislators. Excuse me, they aren't there though, that's the problem, is they aren't there to talk to.
That was part of the problem. We spoke with a lot of the raids.
That's right.
Sure. We don't need any action on it. I just wanted to share the results from the group that had turned them in.
Moving on to our people.
All right, we're going to start off with our focus on purpose from the high school.
Okay. Mr. Stahlheim and I want to talk to you a little bit about the PLC work and the instructional coaching that is taking place at the high school this year. It takes what we've been doing for many years and really refocuses the whole process of instruction of student learning back out to the professional learning community, theories and processes, and those four critical questions that we ask in that PLC. I'm going to let Mr. Stahlheim start with some data information, and we're going to get into how we're addressing the PLCs and instructional coaching to get at the student achievement and the empowerment of students this year.
Okay, so first of all, this is last year's report card for the high school. And that was a trend that we're seeing, that we acknowledge that we want to take the next step and how we're going to raise it. So we have student achievement scores, a little bit lower than what we'd like, and also closing the gaps. If we could take a look at the next one. And changes that we've been doing to our system. First, you see in 2014, we added the one-to-one laptops. And Canvas in 2016, that's our LMS, our learning management system, all teachers using the same program to deliver classroom expectations to, thank you, implement assessments, collect data on the students. And so a lot of those conversations have been about what we can do with our school and our system.
Before we move on, can you go back to the, sorry, one more time?
Sorry. Two fingers.
That's all right. Trying to move the meeting along again.
She does not have a shepherd's license. Oh, it's so embarrassing.
All right. I just want to clarify this graph here. This is ACT score. So the state of Wisconsin started in 2014-15 with the ACT as the common high school test. So all Wisconsin juniors started taking the ACT test in 2014-15. That was the end of the first year that our students had one-to-one laptops. So for one year prior to that data point, all of our students, freshmen through seniors, had laptops. So this is just a simple data point. It's interesting, however, that the following year, things kind of trended down, the year after, things trended down. Those first three years that kids had laptops, we were using a number of different systems to deliver the instructions to them and to use those laptops. Teachers and students were getting familiar with using that technology in their instruction and in their learning. The 15-16 school year is when we started with just the single LMS Canvas, which by the way, I think is kind of interesting that we started using that in 2015, 16 to 20, or 20, 16 to 17 school year. So that data point there was after one year of its use. This school year at the University of Wisconsin, all the University of Wisconsin system schools started using Canvas this year.
My sons both said they feel like rock stars if they got Canvas already.
My brother feels like he's not because he teaches there, and he's like, oh my god, what is this? For a fee, I can show you. So at any rate, what we're trying to show here is just that there are different, there are things that you do with a system that impact the outcomes in that system. And so we are looking at building on the things that we've done in the past to try to push those numbers up as the data comes in for student achievement.
Now we're ready for the next. So as Mr. Chambers mentioned, last year, we had that opportunity to invest more with PD dollars, and we invited some presenters from Solution Tree to come in, and that's Jack Baldeman and Anthony Rybel. And their message was on the PLC process, and it was kind of a recharging or a refocusing for our staff on what we're trying to talk about with, what do we want students to know? And how are you consistent as a building or a school district with that? Anthony Rybel got into the assessment piece, and how do we react to that data? And then we connected with CISA4 and brought in Fame Evenson, and she worked with our staff to develop common formative assessments. So getting that assessment data so teachers can now talk about the same topics, same learning outcomes, week by week, and how do we respond to their learning? Okay, and that's the, there's four questions to the PLC process. I actually combined the bottom two there. How will we respond? It's how will we respond if they don't know it? And then also, what do we do with the students who already know it? And so we, those were the people we worked with last year to focus again. If you could have the next slide, please. Okay, this year, what we have in place to support our teachers and their practice, we've added instructional coaches. So we have Lindsay Lewis and Megan Finch as halftime coaches. And we went to an instructional impactful coaching academy this summer for two days. And then we also had two more support days coming up here in October, November. And that was to help us give quality feedback, which is, as John Hattie talked about, is a high impact on achievement and causing change. So we need to get better at giving feedback to the staff, and that's things that they worked on.
And if I could just offer clarification before we go further. The board did not see an addition of instructional coaches at the high school on the budget because due to the enrollment at the high school and the section sizes, the increase in online coursework being taken, and some of the job placement co-ops that with the number of students taking classes each day in the high school. If you recall, we were able to eliminate a full English position, but we had like a little bit of time in science, we had a little bit of time in business. And instead of taking some really, really strong staff members and making them 70 or 80%, we invested in them in, as instructional coaches. And so their job remains whole, but a portion of their day is still the quality teaching in the classroom in addition to getting this additional training to be quality instructional coaches, because with the number of staff in the building and the number of other things going on, there's no way that the two gentlemen could possibly be in the classrooms giving the type of consistent feedback that is necessary to move practice forward. And so I just wanted to explain why you didn't see that add, and we weren't doing anything behind the scenes. It was simply, we did reduce one full position at the high school, but this was two pieces from separate content areas because there, you know, you get a little extra room in science, a little extra room here, a little extra room there. And so that was how we creatively and strategically used that time.
Organized our resources.
That's right.
Stephanie Wagner from CISA4 is the new Fame for us. So we're working closely with her, and she's actually coming into the district on Friday and next Wednesday. And she worked with Tom and I and Stephanie last Monday to organize an instructional assessment audit. So we're going to have our coaches and Stephanie go into the classrooms, and what exactly are we looking for? And it's all related to those four PLC questions that we had on another page. What can we look for and get an idea room by room? How many teachers are communicating the learning target? How is it being communicated? Follow-up with the assessment? And we're going to have some data to use next Wednesday when we meet with our building PLC leaders.
How often do you guys get into those classrooms? Or are you planning to get into the classrooms, I should say?
So we, as administrators, we try once every three weeks to meet with our students that we're supervi, or students, our teachers that we're supervising. Instructional coaches, a little bit more often than that. So it's very hands-on this year. They're getting used to adults being in the room, so it's... Then we'll talk, like I said, next Wednesday, we'll talk about the audit data, and then we're going to plan on where's going to be our high-impact areas to improve student achievement through the PLC process. And then lastly, we've been working with Peggy Black also on inclusion and co-teaching. And that's with our special ed students, and all means all is kind of the idea that all of our students, we want to improve student achievement. And to do that, each of our five special ed teachers are paired with at least one general ed teacher, and they're co-teaching it. So they're going through the process. Tom, through scheduling, last year has been able to organize a prep time so the two core teachers can get together during the school day and talk about the lessons and plan. And they also are now sharing PLC time together. So it isn't special ed's over here and the math department's doing their own thing, it's whatever special ed teacher's working with the math department, they're meeting in that PLC also. So we're getting very integrated with our efforts in improving that teaching process in the building.
One area as a district that we have been initially identified as having a way too large of a discrepancy is the achievement of our regular ed and our special education. And so this really, a lot of this inclusive practices comes from that data point that we can't continue to pull special education kids out of the general classroom and expect one special ed teacher to be the expert in math, science, history, you know, all of English, all of those things at the high school level, and be able to meet all those kids where they're at. But instead, how can the special ed teacher support them in the classroom with those content area experts? And so that is something that we're doing an awful lot of working across the district this year.
We've only been in school for a couple of weeks, but it's been really exciting to go into some of these classrooms where these teachers are working together with all of the kids, where you would in the past see the kids in smaller groups pulled out of the classroom. And now all the students have the benefit of two teachers in the classroom. They really work together in, I was just in a class, a math classroom this morning, and it was, it was great to see how the two teachers would notice different things in the classroom, redirect kids in different ways and see more, kind of, they, you see more of what's going on, I think, as a team than necessarily as one teacher teaching the classroom. It's kind of the old adage of the teacher with the eyes in the back of their head when they're writing on the chalkboard. Here you've got a set of eyes there, actually watching the kids from the back of the classroom while the teacher's in the front. And so it's really been a neat process to see how, and to see how the students of all different levels are working together with each other and reacting to that. So I've been excited to see that. When you think about it, you know, when you get, especially up at the high school level or any level for that matter, the teacher who is a subject area specialist, why would you take the students who need the most support out of that classroom and deny them that access to that teacher? So this just makes a lot of sense to get them into that classroom with a teacher with a specialist, specialty in that subject area, and the teacher with a specialty in dealing with the students that have the special needs and bring them together to really provide the best possible education for their kids. So it's been fun to see that. Go ahead. So we do continue at the high school also to push the redefining ready, the college career and life readiness. And this fits right into the four questions, the PLC. What do we want kids to know and be able to do? Well, we want them to know what they need to know for life. We want them to know what they need to know for academics. We want them to know what they need to know for careers and to be successful in all of those areas and to develop those skills. So we continue to put that right into those learning targets and those expectations and the outcomes that we want to see from the students throughout all the coursework. We also continue to expand our work-based learning opportunities. Last spring, we had over 30 students placed who earned either an employability skills, a leadership skills certificate through the DPI, or a youth apprenticeship certificate through the Department of Workforce Development. We have a number of students, we have about 24, 25 students right now who are enrolled for this semester. We have several who are continuing into their second year of youth apprenticeship. And we have a couple of students who are, who we had from last year who are now in adult apprenticeships based on the work that they did in their youth apprenticeships. We had one student who was working for Kramer Construction within several weeks of graduation last year in a full apprenticeship program, you know, making well over $25 an hour with full benefits. And so really, really neat things happening with the work-based learning and those skills that the kids are gaining there. The career and life planning continues as well through our comprehensive counseling model. And this year, just a hint, if you hear the crazy, the weird word zello, you may have heard about Career Cruising last year, which was the career platform that we used to track the career planning and the interest inventory assessments and those types of things that students are doing. This year, that company changed their name and changed their platform a little bit, and it's called Zello now. It's the same concept of continuing from sixth grade on to have students really deliberately plan and think about their careers, think about the skills that they, that they need, that they have, and the aptitudes that they have, which direction they want to go with their, with their later life. So that continues as well. All right. We also are continuing to look at our intervention and our enrichment opportunities. If you remember, last year, we went to a lunch and learn program where we brought our intervention enrichment period that had been at the end of the day and sometimes was not super effective into our lunch period, and we've had some growing pains with that. But again, we, we look at teachers thinking through that process of the PLC, and if I have students, for example, who don't, aren't getting those learning targets that I'm presenting in the classroom, how can I give them that extra support in order to have them ready by the next time we meet as a class? And that's where they can grab those students during the lunch and learn time, bring them in with a smaller group, target the specific skills or specific knowledge gaps that they have, try to get them up to speed for the, for the next lesson. And we're working on that, as well as we have, you saw today, the Hoshknap Talking Circles, they come in during that lunch and learn time and working on getting other community services and community groups to come in, work with the students during that time to provide some of that, that career and life readiness as well as the academics. The final thing I want to talk about is our outcome-based feedback and reporting that were, that flows really naturally from this. When you, when teachers are able to really articulate those, what they want kids to know and be able to do, and start to assess where kids are at in that, in that whole continuum of knowing that and being able to do that, they have to give feedback to the kids to say, okay, you're, you're close on this, but I really need you to work on some of these things to get to that next level. And so we've been talking a lot about that type of feedback, how to give that feedback, and how to target the feedback directly towards those, those targets that you have, those outcomes that you want. And so moving away from gathering points and can I get some extra credit point to bump my grade from a B minus up to a B and so on, and looking at, well, what do I need to know? And how do I, how do I get that, that skill more solidified with myself? And that then is going to eventually feed into reporting out on a much more holistic type of system. If you look at the way elementary and middle school report cards look, they have that. They have the skills that students are learning. When you get up in the later middle school and high school, then it's just a letter grade. What does, what does an A really mean? Does that mean a kid brought enough Kleenex boxes and were really nice in class? Or does it mean they really know the physics there? So we're looking at really moving in that direction to having kids and teachers and parents understand exactly what it is those kids know, that yes, these are the targets, these are the things that are absolutes that a kid must know in order to say that they were successful in a physics class or an English 9 class or whatever that may be. So lots more on that to come.
So the intervention, is it the kids choosing to go to the teacher or the teacher saying to the kid, you need to come in somewhere?
Yes.
Both?
Yeah, it's both. We have a, we have a system for that where teachers can enter the student's name in the system and say, I want to see you tomorrow during that lunch and learn, and the student gets an email, and now they're locked in. on a much more holistic type of system. If you look at the way elementary and middle school report cards look, they have that. They have the skills that students are learning. When you get up in the later middle school and high school, then it's just a letter grade. What does an A really mean? Does that mean a kid brought enough Kleenex boxes and were really nice in class? Or does it mean they really know the physics there? So we're looking at, really moving in that direction to having kids and teachers and parents understand exactly what it is those kids know. That yes, these are the targets, these are the things that are absolutes that a kid must know in order to say that they were successful in a physics class or an English nine class or whatever that may be. So lots more on that to come.
So the intervention, is it the kids choosing to go to the teacher? Or the teacher saying to the kid, you need to come in?
Yes. Yeah, it's both. We have a system for that where teachers can enter the student's name in the system and say, I want to see you tomorrow during that lunch and learn. And the student gets an email. Now they're locked into that teacher's spot. Or the student can go to a teacher and say, remember, I was gone yesterday. Last class period, I got to make up that quiz. Can you, it's called roost. You roost me, and then they're locked into that teacher. So it's both. Any other questions? Must have done a good job.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Employment recommendations?
All right, you see on our list that we wrapped up some of those remaining positions in there. I would highlight for you that we are doing the teletherapy for our last remaining speech and language pathology work that we need. So that means the district will have to hire a special education aide to be the in-body person to go get the students and monitor them during the therapy session, then walk them back to class, and then go grab the next kid. So that is the one remaining piece that we were unable to fill prior to that. But otherwise, we're super excited. Our Youth Mental Health Navigator, if you remember, that was that large grant that we were awarded late in the summer, a two-year grant. And so Amy Hunter actually does a very, very similar role to that at Blackwell Memorial Hospital. And she was really excited about the opportunity to come work with all kids and with the district. And so she is going to start with us October 7th, I believe, so right around the beginning of October. So we're really excited to have her on board. So I do need some action for the license staff.
I'd love to approach the employment recommendations.
Seven.
Can we put a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any input? None? Thank you. Under student success, seclusion, and restraint.
Can we call on Timmy Kibazan? Dr. Kibazan?
All right, each year, we come forward with the amount of seclusion and restraints. And I'm going to just sum up everything that's in that report for you. Probably do a better job than what I did up there. So I'm going to sum it up for you. Last year, each year, we are trying to get better and better at having our staff report out on seclusion and restraint. That is really hard for people to understand the difference. And so we've worked really hard to look at that and look at the data keeping. And we store all of that data in Ediclima. So we've really worked with the staff hard to do a better job of the data collection. Because I'm prefacing this because you're going to see our numbers have gone up. Two years ago, our numbers were 35 seclusion and restraints. This past year, it was 78 seclusion and restraints. And when we look at the two years, two years ago in 2017 and 18, we had 35 seclusion and restraints. When we look at the school breakdown, Forest Street had 22 incidents, Red Creek had 12, and the high school had one. And when we look at that, all of the incidents involved male students. Nine were special ed students, three were regular ed students. This year, when we look at the numbers, and again, thinking about grade levels rolling up into different places, Red Creek, out of the 78 incidences, 74 were at Red Creek. Three were at Forest Street, and we had one at the middle school. When we look at those 78 incidences from this year, 64 incidences involved males, 14 were females. But when I break it down even further, and this is a big, a pretty big difference from last year. Last year, we had nine special ed students, and we had three regular ed students involved. This year, we had eight special ed students involved, and we had nine regular ed students involved. Those regular ed students, those eight or nine regular ed students accounted for 33 of the incidences. Then eight special ed students accounted for the 45 incidences. And then when you look at the breakdown by location, classroom and hallway, both years, the last two years, has been the number-one area. Classroom by far the top area, hallway by far the second. And then looking at that playground is next, and then the library, media, and off-school grounds is the next. And that seems to follow, that was the year before as well. So we are able to break it down too as far as timeframes. And this isn't up there, but timeframes, when do most of the incidences happen? When we look at this year's incidences, 78 incidences, 22 of them happened at 8:00 in the morning between that 8:00 and 9:00 timeframe. 13 happened between 9:00 and 10:00, 10 between 10:00 and 11:00, 11 between 11:00 and 12:00, 10 between 12:00 and 1:00, four between 1:00 and 2:00, and then eight towards the end of the day. So when you look at that start of the day for us, between 8:00 and 9:30, we have 35 incidences. So close to half the incidences are happening at the very beginning of the school day. So, but I would say, and I would tell you that, I just think the numbers going from 35 to 78 doesn't necessarily mean that that's how many more incidences. I think our staff are doing a much better job of reporting and clearly documenting into Ediclima. And so I think that's a big piece of what we're doing here.
There used to be a standalone form that they had to fill out anytime there was an incident of seclusion or restraint. And I think that always came as an afterthought. They're very used to putting things in the Ediclima. Anytime there's a major or minor within the PBIS, it goes into Ediclima. So I think this just felt so much more natural to them that they were quick to do it. We also really carefully defined what it meant. Anytime they are uninvited to be a part of the core curriculum, that's considered an act of seclusion. And so that was something that really needed to be reminded. Because people think of seclusion and restraint as physically restraining a student. But remember, seclusion is the first word in that. They've been uninvited to participate in that core curriculum instruction that's happening at that time.
And one of the things we have to do is, within 24 hours, anytime we seclude or restrain, parents have to be notified. So whether it's verbal contact, a phone call, some kind of contact, parents need to be notified within three days. The form that goes into Ediclima that's filled out, parents need to get a copy of that form. So we have three days to fill that out. And Ediclima is a great warehouse for those forms because we can pull out all of the documentation. Last year, at the end of the year in June, when we had all those many snow days to make up, we retrained all of our aides in nonviolent crisis intervention. So we had almost every assistant in the district get retrained again and go through this. And we spend a lot of time talking about de-escalation techniques and really how to talk to those students and work with those students before it gets to a point where we're secluding and restraining. So I really believe that this district is doing a much better job of looking at what are our alternatives before it gets to this point. But they're also doing a much better job of documenting what's going on too. So.
Can you answer my question? We train our staff.
We do.
Is it yearly training also?
CPI is the company that we train through, through the nonviolent crisis intervention. And their recommendation is really every year. And their recommendation is also when we have our Friday get-togethers or when we get our assistants together and our staff to get together, to really work through what happened. Are there some holes that you needed to do, some restraints? So that we're constantly talking about practicing. Because if you don't use it, you lose it. And so it's really constantly practicing.
Follow-up to that would be, do we do an after-action review?
I'm sorry.
Do we, are there an after-action review?
An after-action review. After there's an incident, is there? Yep, always.
Things that we can improve on?
Well, the biggest piece, when we teach nonviolent crisis intervention, the very last step of everything we do is called therapeutic report. And it's really about rebuilding communication. And it's really that whole reflective practice of after an incident happens, reflecting on what happened, what can we do better the next time? What could we change? What did we do really well at? And do we know what those antecedents are? Do we know? So it's pulling all of those people together, even if it's for a couple minutes. Because a lot of times, you have people that go between buildings, and you want to try to catch everybody, because everybody's got pieces of the puzzle, and put that whole puzzle together before we fill out that form and it goes home. So we have a total picture.
And the other thing to remember is that it would be more alarming to me if we had 78 incidences and like 60 kids. Because that would mean there's a large number of kids that are needing to be excluded from core instruction. But instead, the data points to, we have a few very regular students that we haven't found the winning strategy for yet. And so they're consistent and persistent in their negative behaviors, but it's not the masses, it's a small group that we need to keep problem-solving and trying to figure out.
I think too, Jill, if you could scroll down to the bottom, what shows the grade levels? Right there. Because if you, the year before, when I talked to you, Forest Street had 22 incidences. Those were first graders at that time. This time, those first graders are now second graders. You have eight students that made up 47 incidences.
Any other questions for Timmy?
Moving on to the LMC technology programs.
Sorry, I was trying to catch you. All right. Well, this was included in your packet, so I'm not going to go through it in great depth. I just wanted to highlight a couple of pieces. On page two, where it talks about the future-ready framework for libraries and technology, I just wanted to share with you, in past years, when we have brought a library review to the board, it has just been solely library. But this state is really wanting us to combine our efforts in preparing students to be digital citizens and all of that. So really thinking about future-ready schools being the connection between technology and our library systems. And so you can kind of see that reflected here. And a couple of things that our collaborative group worked on in our review process was really focusing on digital resources, digital tools, also the idea of empowering students to be creators in that first blue piece of the pie there, and then kind of leveraging partnerships and tools and things. And so throughout the review, again, I'm not going to go through it step by step, but we did have in there our vision and mission for technology as well as how our libraries operate. We had a nice collaborative team. There was great representation from myself, from the curriculum side. Jill was part of the team as the Director of Business Services. We had our technology supervisor, our LMC director, all of our library assistants participated. We had some additional admin and teachers that were also part of it too. So we had some nice conversations and really were able to do some forward-thinking together. So on page seven is really where we'll just stop for a few minutes and just look at kind of the goals that we came up with. And throughout our process, we did, and it was a really long document because I included the surveys that we did, which were some long appendixes there, or appendices, I should say. So we did survey our internal staff, and then we sent out a survey across the state. And we had some great participation. We had almost 50 districts that replied. So we were able to get a comprehensive look at how are other people doing handling programming when it comes to LMCs and technology. And so you can see that we came up with four goals. The first one around, how can we continue to increase student engagement by that classroom-embedded use of digital tools? And within the technology vision and mission, you don't have to go back there. But we really talk about how important it is to have a quality balance between quality pedagogy strategies, like good instructional practices, as well as a use of digital tools when appropriate. So that it's not all technology all the time, and it's not no technology ever, that there's a nice balance, so that it's a wonderful engagement strategy. But it really should, we should be able to utilize technology in a way that students can access learning in a way that wouldn't have been possible without those devices. So we kind of use that as our guidepost.
Can you make clear what it means to be a student digital citizenship? What does that really mean?
Sure, sure. So there are some guideposts within digital citizenship to consider. Being critical consumers of information, being able to recognize and source information, being able to understand what their own personal digital footprint is. So if in the world of social media, recognizing that those posts never go away, even if they really do take them down. Recognizing how to be a safe consumer of digital information. So how to safely create a password, how to navigate sites safely, what kind of dangers are out there in different aspects of the web, and some of those kinds of things. So just as a few examples. So a little bit later, within the plan, you can kind of see that we K8, based on these goals, through our libraries, K5, we have LMC skills in a rotation on a regular basis. And then 68, we also have some time through our guidance as well as through our tiger time, where our library assistants will deliver curriculum on how do you become a digital citizenship citizen. So it will be something that all students will get. And we've been doing that in a variety of ways, but not necessarily directly through our libraries in the past. And so the ladies were very excited to be part of that process.
Stephanie, who teaches the LMC skills?
So it is our library assistants. So we have one in each building. Do you want me to listen?
No, 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 I just said no. I figured it was the assistants.
So that first goal is around that engagement. And then the second goal really focuses on building staff competency and capacity in how to use both technology services and library services. So one of the things that we, in doing this review, that we came to learn was that we have a lot of things that are present in our libraries, resources for teachers, that the assistants weren't completely comfortable with, and teachers weren't always aware of. And so really figuring out a nice way to put those into regular professional development opportunities for all of our staff, as well as our new staff when they come on board, so that everyone is aware of those resources. And then really making the assistants the champions of those resources so they can be helpful in sharing those forward. We have some nice systems in place within our technology side of things, with our tech coaches, but also really having them work together with our library assistants with professional development. Every building has a regular professional development time from when teachers are supposed to report to when kids come. So it's not a very long time, just a slice of 15 or 20 minutes. And so once a week, there's an offering of professional development around a various particular software program or neat app that you could use or a possible resource through the library. And so they're working collaboratively to create that professional development this year. And then our third goal was to continue to provide a robust infrastructure around resources. And so having some clear processes in place for maintaining both our library resources and our technology resources. And that really was, we have some good things in place. There was strong feedback from staff around that. And so it was really continuing that. And then the last goal was increasing both student and staff circulation and checkout of print materials and other resources at our libraries at the secondary level. Because so many things are accessed digitally. We just don't have nearly the circulation. You probably see that in the following pages where we have the circulation reports. It's just a lot different. And so how can we, it was wonderful, though. The library assistants were just fired up about, well, how can we create some book clubs at the middle school, just like adults have book clubs? And how can we get kids to gravitate towards the library? And what are lots of different ways to do that? So we've got some good ideas started so far this year. So we're excited to kind of see that move forward. So one of the other pieces in the first goal that I did not talk about, that I just wanted to share briefly with you, was a little bit about this idea of student engagement using makerspaces. And so you can see that word in there. So just wanted to give you the definition of what that is. A general term used when people get together and make things. So defined as a place where we gather tools and materials to create, invent, tinker, design. So it's really low-tech and high-tech opportunities for students to be creators and collaborators, builders, problem solvers, all those kinds of things. And so making our libraries the space for that work to happen, where there are readily printed materials available to continue researching, and then also having just ongoing projects happening in there. And so that's not something we've done in a large scale in the past. And so we're really excited about that kind of new energy in our libraries. And the assistants are really excited to drive that work in collaboration with technology and library as a whole. So. Any questions about that work?
Is there room for that at Forest Street? That library is so small and so full.
Well, they actually, Sue Wester had come to the table, and she was really one of the most positive sharers of how she had constructed that last year. So she had students rotate through center. So they weren't like huge projects that were ongoing. But you do see that in some libraries, more often public libraries, but some school district libraries too. But she would have, where they would create in different ways, kind of a center that she could bring out, set up at this table, and then students would move to another experience kind of throughout the library. Honestly, it was kind of funny because some of the older buildings were like, well, if she can do it with kindergartners, we can definitely do. Because creating and exploring, that's kind of messy work. But she was inspiring to the rest of the group.
You know, when reading through the comments that the teachers gave, I kept seeing that, especially the elementary assistants, library assistants really are over, I don't want to say worked, but they're very, very busy. I don't know, do we need to do some more staffing there? Is that, you know, we used to have a library in every school, plus the assistants and that.
So last year was a really significant change for them because they had been doing an awful lot of, they were the checkout and the return. And Sue specifically, I'm not positive what Red Creek, they'd been doing storytime read-alouds with the kids all the way through. Last year, when we did our on-core schedule to create that common planning time for all kids, we had to actually schedule that in there. It used to be that the teacher, as a classroom teacher, I'd have my special schedule, and then I would go schedule a couple of browses with the library throughout the week. And now their browse time was articulated as a part of the on-core schedule in order to have all the teachers release at the same time. It was not very popular when we first asked them to do it. We most definitely offered some support from the library, the LMC specialist, Patty Harson. And we asked them to get together. And we asked them to get together during the summer and create some things. I think the, and please jump in if I'm wrong, I think the anticipation of it was so much more painful than the actual practice of it. I think they were afraid of the idea. But once they got started, they came to the table and were super excited about some of the other things that they were going to do. This year, that encore time, particularly at Forest Street, went from 45 minutes to 30 minutes, and that has made a significant difference.
In a positive way?
Yes, she appreciates it, because she felt like the attention span. And ironically, she said to me, like, the second week of school, I was over there, and she said something like, she goes, I know that I complained about the 45 minutes, but oh my gosh, that 30 goes so fast now. I'm like, wow. So there certainly is a perception that the aides have been asked to teach. I would contend that I'm not sure it's teaching in the regard of creating lesson plans and assessments and all of that stuff. They are the adults in charge of that LMC, and 99.9% of the time, they absolutely rock at it. I think it is partially a confidence thing. It's partially a teacher's feeling like, I'm guessing that these comments are from teachers, not from the aides themselves, where they feel badly for the aides, because they are busy places, which we've invested a ton of money into our LMCs, whether it be in the book collection, in the technology, in the furniture, in the layout, all of that stuff, that they should be busy places. And so, and I don't know if anyone has anything else to add, but I know the anticipation of having to do it was far more painful than the actual implementation of having to do it.
The one thing I would just add, in the statewide survey that we did, we asked some real specific questions on how do other districts handle staffing? Because that was something that we were curious. What, how are we in the ballpark with other districts? How, what are other districts staffing their libraries with? Is it assistants? Is it full-time directors? You know, where have things landed? And we were very much in line with the rest of the state, that most folks that replied anyway have one director. Depends on the size of their school, of course, or district, of course, but one director, and then assistants in every building. Staff to adult ratio, we were probably on a little bit of a lower ratio end. Like Forest Street, for example, we have one adult to about 250 kids with that direct instruction piece. And there were several that were more like 1 to 400, you know, somewhere in that ballpark. But so we're definitely right in the mix of.
And I think that was a two-pronged problem. At the same time that so many districts were having to reduce budgets, there was a significant lack of people licensed in being an LMC specialist. And so those two went very much down the road together, that there weren't people applying for the jobs. And so as budgets needed to be reduced, it is mandatory that every district must have somebody with that license. And so honestly, Patty Harrelson carries that license. Other districts have approached us, asking if they could pay her a couple thousand dollars stipend and use her name on their license, because there is a significant shortage of people that carry that license. At some point, they're going to have to figure something else out. And at some point, Patty might decide to retire, and we'll have to figure something out. But we are within the norm for our, which doesn't make it right, but we are.
I just noticed the comments from the teachers.
For sure.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or thoughts to discuss? All right. Well, based on administrative code, we have to have a plan in place. And every year, we'll pull this group back together in a review, and every year gets to come to you for approval. So thank you for your time, and we'll see you again next year on this topic.
So I have a couple of questions. So can, do we have a system where kids can check books out digitally?
We do. It's called Overdrive. And so that is something that we have looked to expand. And with Patty being the overseer of all of the libraries, that's not a system that we have at Forest Street in Red Creek, but it is one that we have at the middle school and high school. And so she's worked with Peggy Gordon, our Technology Supervisor, to kind of get that up and running. And so that is also something that within the middle school and high school libraries is part of our, part of our goal to, how can we share that more with students and have that be in a future use system, so that all kids know about it, can access it?
I took notes.
Thanks for being so prepared.
Yeah. What is, okay, I was just looking through the, like, the LMC. Oh, it was a sample budget, maybe, so this maybe doesn't really apply to us. Is that something about a citation machine? What is that?
And so that was just a sample, that is one of our building budgets. And so.
It was on page 13.
Mine's printed, it's on page 12, but.
Oh, I didn't see.
Underneath the graph where it says detailed, try keep scrolling.
Specifically in the research part.
And so we have a machine in, I think, our middle school and high school that reads Scantrons. And so at some point in time, that was paid for with LMC funds, and so is maintained through that budget center.
And that's called a citation machine that reads the Scantrons? Okay.
It's a small portion of the budget piece. But we wanted the collective committee, we didn't necessarily want them to know, this X number of dollars is spent on this. We wanted to give them an idea of how those funds are allocated on LMC items. Good question.
Thank you, Stephanie.
No problem.
Student success or committee reports?
Okay, me. So most of our time was really just spent looking over the professional development that took place over the summer. We saw which teachers participated and, you know, what subjects they were participating in, what was happening in the different buildings, and scheduling a lot of that. Stephanie told us about the iReady programs, which is a new screener to replace the STAR testing. And that's being implemented this year. Apparently, that's more closely aligned with the Wisconsin Forward.
So yeah, that basically sums up the meeting.
Just clarification for a second. Stephanie, did you need action on that LMC plan? Because I didn't have it listed as action, and then Jill was asking for a vote. And so I just wanted to be clear, did you need?
Just a share.
Okay, all right. It's been shared.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make it clear before we move on.
Finance and facilities, monthly expenditures. I believe that was in the packet. Does anybody have any questions on the expenditures? Okay, for motion.
I'll be the most gentle first.
Amy. Just a minute, second. Any further discussion on expenditures? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, none. Spring Creek School donation.
All right. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about Spring Creek School. I passed around the little brochure that has been made. And ironically, I met my first year in this role, so seven years ago, Basil Holder came to me and was super excited about the Spring Creek School. Apparently, it has been owned for quite some time by Dr. Richard Holder. And he has maintained the inside to look like a period-appropriate classroom. So there's old desks and the inkwells and all of that stuff. And he's really taken an awful lot of care of the facility over the years. Dr. Leymeyer came to talk to me, because Dr. Holder is unfortunately ill, and he's very concerned what's going to happen to Spring Creek School when he is no longer here to care for it. And so Dr. Leymeyer started with a whole story about how he was driving by Red Creek School, and he was just inspired by this whole Spring Creek to Red Creek. You know, 100 years of educational evolution, and he was really excited. And he's like, I think it was destiny that that name ended up being a creek, and it's just got to go together. And he was really enthusiastic about it. I have to be honest, in the back of my mind, I'm like, oh, please don't gift that to us, and we have to send somebody out there to mow the lawn. And I was like nervous about that. And he said, so, I was thinking, how appropriate would it be to move Spring Creek School somewhere close to Red Creek? And I started thinking about the site, I started thinking about our drainage, I started thinking about all of that stuff. And then I linked it to a couple other conversations that we've been having with. There's a group in the community that is talking about safe roads to school, and keeps talking about sidewalks and trailways, so that kids could bike or walk to school more regularly. Red Creek has been talking about an outdoor classroom space since we first moved into that space. And so what I said to Dr. Leymeyer was, he said right away, he goes, I'd love to move the school in. And then his next sentence was, and I don't think any taxpayer dollars should be used at the moving of this school. I think I like that a lot more. But he has been meeting with some other gentlemen from the community, talking about this. And it has gotten so far that he has actually contacted some moving companies just to see the viability of the building. The way it is built, we went out and did a little tour. We did a field trip one day. And there are like screens in the foundation, that you could put beams right through those screens and lift the building up. And so Dr. Leymeyer is having somebody come out and do an evaluation to see if they think the building is still movable. There's a, used to be an old bell tower. I don't know what it's called, he had a name for it on top, but. Thank you, that's one of this. And he said that would have to come off, but could certainly be reattached. So all these conversations together, they are interested in gifting that building to us at Red Creek. Red Creek, Laura has had this vision for quite a while about this amazing outdoor learning space. And so what we had talked about was, would it be possible to engage some other community people in town and start to make some pathways through the land that we have? We own just to the bottom of the ravine and the hospital. So it's the Hoffman House, and then the Forest Street Playground starts right here. And then the ball fields are there. And we own to the bottom of that ravine, that's still all wooded there. And then it's, we, it like tapers in, and it goes further than where we have it mowed. We own until the end, up to Highway A, but there are some wetlands in there. So there certainly, Dee and I are going to have an awful lot to say over where we can make trails. But I thought was, what if we had some trails that could be used by classes and kids that led to a clearing area? And the Spring Creek School could be in that clearing area and could be used as an outdoor space? And at first Laura was like, we could have a blacktop. I'm like, or they could snowshoe out there in the winter, so that we know that we're blacktop to maintain. Green Bay, that's all good. But, and then there could also be an outdoor learning space with like the, you know, circle area with split benches, and doing all that stuff for kids to gather out there. And so I think that there would be a way that we could honor the request and the historical side of the Spring Creek School, and that whole idea of the one-room schoolhouse. I mean, you can just quickly imagine an awful lot of really neat conversations with kids now that could happen in that area at pretty minimal cost. Laura's big picture would be that what if we asked, like, the Lunda family, who's known for their bridges, to build us a bridge over the ravine? What if we asked the Hoffman family, who builds roads all over, to help us build that pathway back to there? And could we use some of our real pillars of our community that have already been so generous? Is there something that we could do to kind of combine all of this to create an outdoor learning space? Because we own to the bottom of the ravine, we don't own a lot of flat area for that open clearing. And so I wanted to talk to the hospital, because they don't have any plans to develop all of that land, and they know that our property abuts each other. But I didn't want to get this so far down the road before you guys knew anything about it. And we started having that conversation. And so I would love thoughts or feedback up until this point. But I appreciated Dr. Leymeyer saying, apparently, Dr. Holder is in hospice care, and he just said, I can't tell you how excited I am to be able to go tell him that I had a conversation with the superintendent, and she was open to some ideas and was kind of excited about what could exist. And so that is very nice, that he's so generous and wants it taken care of and so forth. What thoughts do you have?
Well, I shared with Shelley before that I went and saw Spring Creek School. I drove by, it's a cute little school. And then I drove by Red Creek, and I thought, where would we possibly put it? So I did think of what would happen, but I love the idea of putting it in a clearing somewhere.
And we could make it, we could open that to the community sometime. And you can just imagine an awful lot of opportunities if it exists.
Will it be vandalized back there? I'm thinking about that.
Yeah. We got to visit it once, as a little school trip over there.
Did you?
Yeah, Cameron was like, where are you doing this?
So Kent Wyman and Jill and I went out there, and we said, what about the playground equipment? We think it could probably stay here, because it's not an awesome shame.
That was an operating school when I was.
Excellent.
And we had rally day in all the country schools.
We'd come together. And was that the one that they, would you take turns at different schools that you rallied at, or was that the one?
No, it was always at the fairgrounds.
It was, oh, okay, okay.
And then the country schools would come in. But I know Grace used to give tours of that to the boys' camps and the kids in school and all of that. So I think it would be really, and I don't think we should put a road there. I think people should have to walk, because they had to walk to school.
Not a road for driving, but at least a clearing, because it's pretty, you know.
Should we make it a pelt?
Up the both ways. And make sure we shovel all of our snow.
No, no, you can't shovel the snow.
No, towards the path. So I guess I just was looking for, if anyone feels very strongly like we don't want any part of this conversation, that we would know that now. Otherwise, we recognize that this is not something we want to make a significant financial investment in, but are you comfortable with the idea that we could continue to talk to those partners and see what could happen? Okay, great, great, great. It was a fun conversation, so.
Isn't it nice that there are people willing to do that?
And he was just so, so nice to talk with him. And he has an interesting perspective. And then he was sharing, when the high school was built, talking about the building on the swamp. I'm like, we just toured those locker rooms, I noticed that. And so, yeah. We have some really, really neat individuals in our community that have given back in so many different ways. And he served on the school board at different times. And I just love how they stay engaged and involved, and it's just, yeah, it's very neat. I think that's very special, something that we have in our community that I'm not sure exists everywhere. All right.
Budget recommendations.
So at our last meeting, I had shared with all of you that the administrative team had not had the opportunity to talk since the state budget had been updated. And so I had asked for approval on some of the items, but not the dollars to allocate to the renovations to the Highway A property, so that we could move our transportation garage. The admin team met later that week, and we are now making that recommendation too. So the only action I am asking is it was an estimate of $270,000 that would come out of this year's dollars to do the renovations to the transportation garage, so that we could transition them over there. And then we can continue to talk about what may possibly happen over on this site. So that's the recommendation we're making and asking for action on.
So you would like a motion?
A motion.
Unless there's any questions for me.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations.
I'll be the second then.
I just had a question. So we took tours of the building.
Yep.
And that money is nothing we could use to help with some of the budget items that we became aware of on that tour.
It's not true. The challenge really comes in, well, it's complicated, so stick with me on the story here. So none of the fixes for what we saw are going to be barely scratched at the surface with the dollar amount we're talking here. Some of the solutions we did talk about were, could we perhaps use that transportation garage for locker rooms instead of, you know, is there something else that we could move somewhere? And so by moving the transportation garage, some of those, that could at least enter into the conversation again, is what else could we put out there instead of at that lower level of the? So it's a yes and a no. We talked about the replacement of the boiler, and that's like a $2.5 million. So would this dollar impact that? Absolutely, every penny helps. But is this dollar amount enough to set that into action? Probably not. And so the problems there are larger, and this would be a tiny little start to it. And so, again, feeling like if we don't ever move the transportation, we are still landlocked up there pretty tight and not have a lot of flexibility.
And these things have to be done in order to move there, correct?
Correct, yes. Yes, because right now, there's not a wash bay there, and we need to be able to, you know, wash the buses off. And so that's really one of the primary causes. It already is a three-stall, but we need to rip up the floor and create a wash basin. We have to install the electrical outlets, we have to reinforce the blacktop and to cement, so that the buses aren't going to crush it. And we can't move them without all the power stands, so that they're plugged in during the winter, all of that kind of stuff. So it is necessary to invest a little bit before we can.
I mean, this amount of money, isn't something, or is it that we can put into that special account for?
It could go into our long-term maintenance, yep. And so the rest of our conversation that day was that those dollars, which are at, and Jill, please, I don't have those notes right in front of me, so hang with, help me out if I'm wrong. That fund becomes eligible for us to be able to tap into it at December of this year. Because if you recall, when we started it, it had to be five years without being touched. That is at about three-quarters of a million dollars, about $750,000 currently exists there. In addition, I think this is where I lost some of you in the last conversation, a large portion of our energy project and the purchase of the land on Highway A was approved by the board to come out of our fund balance. In the end, we did not have to tap into fund balance only for a small portion of the energy project, but certainly not the whole dollar amount that we had talked about. So that means that there are dollars in our fund balance that you've already approved for other projects that we were able to pay for with. for other projects that we were able to pay for without tapping into that. And so, those dollars also could be on the table for one of those larger projects that you're, that we saw that day. So, those two pools of money certainly are enough to be impactful. Until we move transportation, we still don't have a lot of flexibility up there. So, does that answer your questions? Okay.
Clear discussion. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed?
That leads us right to our facility, to our debriefing. And to hear thoughts and priorities and, and feedback and just some general discussion about what you saw and, and thoughts you have.
The smell was great.
In which area?
The locker rooms downstairs.
Or upstairs with their uniforms. Terrible.
Took me back 40 years. But no, I, I was, I guess it was an eye-opening because we do have a lot of work to do. And moving the bus garage is, I think, step one of that. So, we can utilize the space that we have, you know, the locker rooms. Hopefully maybe get some restrooms over there and change some things around. But it definitely needs work. And I thought about, and I asked Shelley, can we build up? You know, maybe. It depends on how we restructure out there.
If we were gonna add a new section, that new section could be built to have two floors. But the current building that exists was not built for a second floor to go on. So, if we're gonna add square footage out, that could be two stories. But the current structure can't have another layer put on top of it. And that was a misnomer that was talked about a lot during our last referendum. There's a lot of people that said, I was there when they poured those footings. It's made for two stories. And nobody who has plans agree with that.
And I think there's a lot of shipping. It's so moist. It was dry two weeks until the rain. So.
Because I thought, I thought mine had fixed some of those things. And so, I was surprised that it was still as wet as it was. Although this was a wetter than usual year.
Right. And they did fix a lot.
I was just gonna say, and the sad part is, this was a lot better than it would have been without that. Because what we saw was the extremes on both ends of that lower level. The middle areas used to be equally as moist as the end. So, they addressed that middle part where if it wasn't this wet as the summer was, we wouldn't have seen that same stuff in that middle area.
They're routed in building. Are there not HVAC systems that can stand alone or stand on the roofs or do that?
We can do HVAC, which will help some of it. But the water seeping up from the floors, I don't know how to stop that. So, right now Kent and Jill have been actively working with some sealant companies to see if, at what cost, we could, and, and I think, and you can certainly speak to it, but I feel like at some point it's going to be a temporary fix. Because it's not something, we're built below the water level there. So, Dr. Leimeyer was 100% correct.
Water table side. We talked to a couple of companies. They're talking about, are there things we could do outside the school? Escavating outside the school. I don't know to what cost that would be. Certainly, I think part of any solution will have some more pits for the water to be pumped out. Perhaps there's some, they call them beaver, what do they call them? Can't remember the name. But anyway, some sort of trenching almost inside the school to be able to get the water into those pits and out. Then, could we do any kind of sealant on the walls to keep the water out, you know, from coming inside it? Yeah. So, they're working on a, we have two companies working on proposals. I think both are going to be a little bit different. We also talked about, is there something we could do where we're just trying to get the water away from the building even a little bit more? One thing we'll have to, I'm concerned about now is because we have a lot of those, the drains go across the sidewalks. We don't need more slips and slippery areas in the winter. So, we talked about cutting through the sidewalks and putting grates or something else. The water goes under maybe into the sewer system, sanitary system. But, so I just, there's a lot of moving parts, but we're getting some quotes and proposals. We're looking at it. So.
That was our first step after that tour was, let's at least get some experts to talk to us about what possibilities exist.
You know, every year we would hear about the water. And it was like, we thought, yep, there's water up there. We hear it's wet. But when you see it and you smell it and you touch, see that they're scrubbing the mold out of the football helmets and the smell on those uniforms, that no child should, or teacher should have worked in them. I'm sure it was bad.
Well, I didn't, I didn't make this particular tour, but I had gone on one, it was before the first referendum, or before, actually, I think maybe even some failed referendums that might have been. And even then, I mean, it, it wasn't even like a rainy season like this. And it was still disturbing. I mean, you know. Because I think you were talking about then, that they had to bleach out like the helmets and all that and this mess.
And we're gonna invest in, you know, millions of dollars in the boiler. We certainly don't wanna put it down there as it is currently. So.
An industrial dehumidifier would be part of it. We have some newer commercial dehumidifiers down there. But both these companies said we can even get better ones that are gonna all dry up that space too. So.
And the idea of funneling all that water in one spot, or in a couple of different spots, as opposed to it seeping through and then trying to dry it out, you know, if we can steer it. And as we talked about that day, it's more difficult now that we've built around all of that. We've got more building around the edges of that original slab. And so, that makes some of that external options are less because of that. And so, I recognize that we are not okay with how it currently is. You know that we have some dollars that are currently already, well, very soon to be available with, when we talk about the other long-term maintenance fund. Are you interested in starting to talk about a potential referendum? Are you wanting to wait till you see those quotes? Are you, where, where is your level of urgency?
That's what it costs.
Yeah. I would like to see the quotes.
And knowing that the quotes are going to perhaps solve the wetness, but aren't going to improve the music spaces, aren't going to improve the space that we're renting at for, for Forest Street Kids, or the lack of storage in that building. So, I just wanna add that, that is certainly one critical piece of information, is what's it gonna take to stop the water down there? But remember, that's still not gonna address all of everything else. But we'll certainly have more information than we have now by the time we have those.
I'm still interested in pursuing the idea of 4K over at Get Heart. And moving the, sorry Tammy, I'm sorry Tammy, but.
And maybe moving. If my eyes popped, I was just like, oh! We've not talked about this at the admin team yet.
You know, we just talked about it and said, you know, I don't, there aren't as many kids left over there in Crewe. So, you know, if that's a possibility, I would like to look at it. Sorry, I didn't mean to surprise you there.
Oh, no, no, no. It's all right. I've got a agenda for tomorrow morning. So, they're just gonna calm down. We'll talk about it tomorrow.
You said you wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. This is all good.
We were gonna slide you over to Spring Creek, so.
I am so glad to know that. I don't know about the wifi in that building, Tammy.
As long as I can watch the football games, I'm really happy.
Yeah. You know, I think we all agree that someday we're gonna talk about a referendum that's gonna come. But I think just a slow whirlwind a little bit. Praying for winter will freeze the water right now. I don't know.
I would like to see quotes about what it would cost, you know, for those music spaces and those other things, and see what it would cost the community. And I'd like to know all those facts.
That's a tough one for us to, so just thinking back of our previous referendum processes, I believe our music spaces at the high school should be drastically improved. But would the community agree that that is our next area of focus? And so, by the time we collect quotes, there has to be some shaping, design, space, whatever. And then, do we run into the, we got this facility committee together from the community, and we're trying to sell you our solution, as opposed to the last time we started from ground zero, here's all of our challenges. What do you think makes sense? So, that's just my, my one, I'm not sure which is the right, you know, I don't, I don't want to cart before a horse. And I don't want anyone to feel like we've already solved it. We just need you to agree with us. So, I, I struggle a little bit with that. But I recognize, at the very least, if we get a dollar amount per square foot for the average music spaces, we most certainly could do that. So, that there was a dollar amount attached at least like a really high level.
Well, did I dream this? Or did Jill say that we could do some building without making a big tax impact?
So, there is also, every board has the right to borrow a million dollars without going to referendum. And because we've done our tax, our defeasance the last couple of years, we have created an opportunity for the community to support a referendum at a zero tax impact. And you've done that incrementally each year, that we have not allowed the levy to drop all the way down. We've kind of held it in this defeasance mode the last couple of years. And we've still gone down. So, it's gone down, but not the full amount that it could. So, actually, we talked to Baird Financial about, how could we get at, what if that dollar amount, how much could we borrow and still not have a, to increase on the taxes? And so, that's something that we are working with them on. Because that would be an interesting dollar amount to know as well. And I, we still have to go through the referendum process. People would have to approve it. But we'd be able to stand up and say, all this can happen. And there will not be an increase to your property taxes.
You know, after you said involving the community, that worked better before. That it might be good to start getting some people on having a look at those spaces. I agree that the choir space was horrible. The band is not slightly better, but not much.
We'd like to form a committee.
I think those others would have some thoughts first. Did you have?
Oh, I guess I don't know how you know how much space you're supposed to have.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure that there's a lot of architects that could tell you for a high school with 550 kids, here's the average square feet of a choir room that is modern and, you know, whatever. So, I, I think we could get a rough dollar amount is what I think.
I think that would be nice to have. Secondly, when I think about storage, if we build more storage, it will be filled with it. So, because that's what happens with everybody. You know, we do that. So, I would really encourage people to get rid of the stuff that they haven't used within the past year. I think that's really important. Because there's a lot of, it looked to me like junk. No, you know, someone's junked it's someone's treasure.
I remember the 4K and the early childhood teachers. I think, to be fair, we should go take a tour when the kids are there. Because it is a whole different follow-up when there's activity happening in every one of those spaces as well. And so, that would be, but, agreed, agreed.
But the shower room, that wasn't acceptable for a teacher to be, have a desk in there.
Oh, yeah. So, is that in one of the options?
Well, that's something that we would need to talk about. That's what I'm saying with overcrowding at Forest Street and the fact that we're renting 4K space. And that kind of goes with the whole Forest Street bucket. Like, should somebody be teaching?
I think that was one of those things at Forest Street that had the creep. Like, they kept to use it. It was just one teacher in an office area that was an office. But then, over the years, it's been used more and more and more. And then, now we're seeing kids in there too, or whatever.
The creep. That's a great way to describe it.
It's, it's just changed without really realizing it.
Do we have more? Because we don't have as many students as we had 15 years ago.
Um, 15 years ago? Well, we have a whole 4K program that we never had. We certainly have more special education spaces than we had before. We probably didn't have our own occupational therapist 15 years ago.
So, it's the special things that you added on?
Yeah, we have added programming. And when we did our class size reduction, you know, you use, if there were 25 kids in a classroom, we would need as many classrooms as we need when there's 18 kids in a classroom. So, you know, it all impacts and.
I agree. This is creepy. I like that.
Yeah. Not that we're creepy, but.
Shut up.
So, what I'm hearing, I just wanna be able to summarize this. What I'm hearing is that you are interested in the quotes that Jill and Kent are currently pursuing. I am certainly willing to talk to them about average square footage and construction for spaces at the high school. But Forest Street gets a little bit more complicated because there's a lot more other factors. And, and it's not just how many classrooms, it's which spaces are beginning to decide are unacceptable to continue to use as a classroom space. It's, you know, all of those pieces as well. I also heard 4K at Get Heart, which would have some financial impact just with the busing, but not, you know, significant when we talk about the spaces that we're currently doing. There was also conversation that day about if we are gonna engage in the community daycare conversation. If 4K were to move to Get Heart, that would be a logical site to at least talk to them more about.
Jill, do we save any, have we saved any money by having the schools more consolidated in those locations? I don't know.
Well, I mean, our energy costs, we've saved monumentally, taking Third Street off the grid. I mean, monumental savings there.
But I mean, the transportation, just the transportation costs. Have they changed much?
They would, because you're not shoveling across town. You know, so there were six, five, six buses that used to go over to Get Heart. Now, we're, you know, not doing that. There's, there's some savings there. But I wouldn't say that's a huge driver.
Yeah. It's a more of a schedule. We've regained instructional minutes because we don't have to jockey the kids out. So, there's been other incidental benefits, but perhaps not the fuel and, you know, that kind of thing.
I was wondering if we could have our next board development sooner than later with all of this on the table to talk about some of these things. I don't know how you guys feel, but.
That's an idea.
Would we, so it is near, it's mid-September. Would we wanna shoot for maybe last week in October? Would that seem acceptable?
Good job.
Up together a doodle for some choices in October?
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you for your thoughts and comments and conversation.
I think we're on it. Equalizing conversation?
So, I'm actually gonna ask Jill to talk about this one a little bit.
Okay. So, what Dr. Severson shared with you is actually an estimate of, so Baird put together this estimate of what our equalization aid might look like for the fall, when we actually have to set the tax levy. So, just kind of giving us a heads up, I guess, in a, in a way that our equalized value may increase by four and a half percent, which is pretty significant, actually. What this means is that typically, typically, you take the tax levy and you divide it by the equalized value, and that's your tax rate. So, it will make our tax rate look lower. It will drop it further. So, that's something to just think about. But it also will be used in the next year to calculate our equalization aid. So, we'll look a little bit richer in the formula perhaps, because our, our aid has, our, our value has gone up. But that depends on how many students we have too. So, because you put value behind a student. All of those factors are still kind of swimming around. But when the state budget came out, our tax rate actually was going to go up because we had some more dollars. And revenue limit went up a little bit more than we had originally calculated in June. So, that tax rate was actually gonna go up to about $8. Now, it's looking like it could drop back down to $7.70. That's what we had originally proposed in June anyways. So, it kind of went up and it's gonna back down again. So, something to be thinking about as we go into October to set the final tax levy. Talking about that defeasance that we've been able to create those dollars, feel to do something with, with facilities would be helpful as well.
And the other reason that we wanted to share this is, I don't know if you guys ever hear from people that live in different sections of, of the community, different townships. But every once in a while, like, you know, the article will go out that the tax rate dropped. And then, somebody who lands in who went up by an awful lot, they call them and say, what do you mean it dropped? My taxes went up, blah, blah, blah. And so, you can see how the rates.
City went up 6.6%.
There you go. And so, you can see how it really, well, yeah, Dewhurst, 8.5%. So, it, I just thought it would be interesting for you to see how significantly the differences are depending on what township people live in. And so, when somebody says to you, I thought, we read an article that the tax rate went down. You can say, it did as a whole. But what township do you live in? There's other factors that are included in your equalized aid, or equalized value of your township. So, we don't normally share that. But I just thought, when it came across, it would be interesting for you to be able to take a look at and to understand that.
Patty asked me a good question before the meeting too. I should have pointed out the, the numbers. The column here that says percent applicable to school, to district, this means that Dewhurst of this total is 7.4% of that, or not of the total, I'm sorry, of our district total. So, that is our district, 893 million. They're only 7.1, 7.4% of that because they are mainly in probably the Nealsville School District. So, they're not in the school district of Black River Falls. Black River Falls is 100% in the school district of Black River Falls, for example.
So, it's the percent of their properties that are within?
Percent of the property, yes. Within the school district.
Okay, got it.
Within the Black River Falls school district.
And so, like Little Springfield. So, like when we were doing the referendum, we watched the Springfield Town Hall. They said, we don't even get any voters from your district. And I said, but you're on our list. So, you're gonna listen to us. We'd love to talk with you about it anyway. So.
So, it's kind of interesting. So, you can see where it's all like, LBN's 85% of their values are within. So you can see where it's like, LBNs, 85% of their values are within the School District of Black River Falls. And you can see how things have changed. And I did look up on the Department of Revenue website to see where the four and a half percent overall increase might have come from. And I think that some municipalities were reassessed. There's some new building and some improvements going on and mostly all residential. But that's where the valuations changed the most were residential values.
So that's why we get a call from somebody, why did mine go up so high? Well, you probably live in Dewhurst or in the city or, yeah, it's all relationship.
You know, we have 19 municipalities within our school district. A lot of school districts have one or two or five in 18. So as those pieces of the pie change, it really could change somebody's tax bill.
Right, yeah. So the increase where 100% of the property is within our district, that has much more significant impact than Dewhurst with only 7.4%. It will impact other districts more than Dewhurst. All right, any questions? That was just kind of an informational, keep you in the loop on school finance. The riveting world of school finance.
Yes. Many minutes, packets, and discussion.
Make motion to a judge in that meeting. Meeting minutes?
Voted in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Administrators?
All right.
Rock and roll.
So I'm gonna start and then I'll take them. How about? First, I just wanted to share with you that you all received the call about a threat that was issued that was found on social media over the weekend. Kyle Nasbisch went and visited with that student and family today and came back to report to Dr. Kiblasa and Mr. Stahlheim and Mr. Chambers and myself that it was initially shared on Snapchat as a meme. So there was a picture along with it and then the line of text. And when you put that back together, it is a quote from the Avengers movie. When you just see the text without a meme and have never seen the Avengers movie, it certainly is alarming, the words in and of themselves. And so extensive conversation between all involved. And we believe that there was no ill intent. We believe that it was a poor choice of words and the student will be back in school tomorrow. So just wanted you to know that that is, was the case in that incident. I want to tell you that the rest of this, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, this week is the Fall Superintendent Conference. So I'll be down in Madison. And then starting next Monday through probably October 14th, I am in need of a medical procedure and so I'm going to be out for three weeks. And so hopefully we'll be back starting half days that fourth week after. That first week, I make zero promises. After that, I am 100% available via cellphone. But Jill will be tagged for that first week, the 23rd through the 29th. But, so I will be out at that time. I'm hoping that we could reschedule the policy committee because that was supposed to be that first week in October when I know that I'm going to be gone. If we could schedule it for the afternoon of the 14th, that's when I am planning on being back for half days. I don't know if that will work for those of you on the policy committee. It's pushing the monthly meeting back one week.
It's fine with me.
That works for you? Okay.
For the 14th of October?
Yep.
Wednesday late savings time?
I don't know that.
I know what time you leave the woods.
I was unsure how that had an impact on the meeting.
No, you know. You leave the woods a little bit.
Okay, so I will send out a calendar invite or Marty will, but so there will be no policy committee on October 7th. And I am very certain I'll be back half days by the 14th and so we'll be able to do that meeting then. And then I would ask Jill to give us an update on a repeater for the district admin report before we go to the buildings.
So one of the things that we've been talking about with the transportation department is the lack of good communication that we have with some of our buses in the outline areas. So even, so the bandwidth has gotten smaller, I'm told, over the years. And we actually cannot communicate from our base station, which we have an 80-foot antenna right at the bus garage here, to a bus in the village of Hickson, so in town of Hickson, I should say. So we sometimes have to radio to a bus who might be halfway there and they can talk to the bus that's in Hickson and get the communication going that way. That is just not acceptable. There's going to be certain areas where we're not going to have communication no matter what just because of the topography that we have. We have approached the Jackson County Sheriff's Department and the county, I guess, overall about using one of their towers that's on the Hickson Ridge. Not the tallest towers, but one of the smaller towers off to the left. Right now, Jackson Electric has some of their equipment on there and then we could put our equipment on there as well. We have signed an agreement with them. The only cost they might be looking for is some help with the electricity bill for putting our equipment on there. So it's really a minimal cost of really being a good partner with us and letting us put our equipment there. But that will enable us to put a repeater on that tower and give us better coverage. We've already done a coverage study with one of the communication companies that we're looking at purchasing the repeater from. I've been also working with another company on handheld radios. We're trying to maybe work that all together and see, make sure that we can communicate with the buses as possible and have communication between schools too. So that is what that is, but just wanted to make you aware of that. We're trying to improve safety and security there.
And I'll turn over to Melanie.
So I'm just going to talk about something that Shelley, there's Houston alluded to earlier. It's that we are running a new schedule this year and the benefits that, from that have just been phenomenal. We extended our lunch periods into three, three sections rather than two. Gives us less kids coming through the food service lines and less kids out on the playground. So there's less issues out there. And it has just been completely well-received by all supervising staff and food service as well. And another benefit of the schedule is that we do have shorter specials. So our kiddos aren't sitting as long with one teacher. Just, it's a much, much more developmentally appropriate schedule for our little kiddos. So we're looking to create a new dynamic.
If you can imagine a building full of 4K kindergarten and first graders and the second week of school, I went over and asked someone how it was and they said, the lunchroom is so calm. I mean, think about that. Calm and that many little kids, that's impressive, so.
So how long, what time does the earliest lunch period start then?
10:30, which might sound early to you. However, the kindergartners that come through are starving at that time. And so they have an afternoon snack and it seems to be perfectly suited for them.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, it's great because you can be in there and you can talk just like this and it's nice and quiet and you can hear across the cafeteria. So it's a beautiful thing.
Thank you, Melanie.
All right, Melanie took my discussion.
Thanks, Melanie.
I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our Tiger Pride. It's really broken down into three different categories.
He has a.
Yeah, there was a.
He's got a thing.
So, you know, character, leadership and behavior. It's not new. We did the same, very similar last year. Character, we focus on one word of the month. It's a high-character word. For instance, gratefulness, perseverance, kindness. And then for the month of September, we're focusing on unity. Some activities, we plan some activities for every month. Throw some ideas that teachers can use in the classroom, just in everyday stuff, their morning meeting, irresponsible classroom stuff. And then we had an assembly on unity and that's what the pictures are that you're looking at there. So all of our students into the gym at one time and we did some unity activities to kind of kick off the start of the year. Leadership, we have a Tiger Council. What the Tiger Council is, is one representative from each of the 24 classrooms gets together and they're basically a board that makes decisions, helps plan activities. One thing that they have planned for this week is a dress update. What it's going to be is that create your own T-shirt. Maybe you saw the story from the University of Tennessee, the fourth grade boy who got bullied for wearing his own University of Tennessee T-shirt. We're going to do something very similar. Students are going to be able to design their own sports or favorite team. And then they're going to pin it up to their T-shirts and we're all going to do that on Friday. So that'll be really, really exciting for them. Excited to see how that goes. And then behavior, PIS is our behavior protocol. But then we also have the Tiger Wave. And it's basically a thought process of thinking before, before doing. And we try to instill that in all of our students. On a little bit of a fluff here, Laura started a tremendous Thursday night bedtime story. Maybe you saw it on Facebook, but it was very, very, very well-received to the point now where we now have readings on Thursdays, Fridays, Sundays and Tuesdays. We're going to have a teacher or an educator of some sort reading a story and then it'll be broadcasted on Facebook. I'm up on Thursday, I'll be reading Little Blue Trucks.
Excellent. I don't know if you take the afternoon to see that on Facebook, but it has been so adorable. Honestly, and the first day Laura was just like, she goes, I was there for rounding or something. She goes, I'm going to say it out loud because once I say it out loud, I have to do it. So I think tonight, I'm going to put on my pajamas and read a book on Facebook and post it. I'm like, you are going to do that? And from the second she did, that a sign-up sheet went out and there's people signed up through January that are anxious to take a spot and pick a book. And I have a New Year's Eve book, I can't wait.
I just wanted to say, and it's on our Facebook page, but Brandon knocked it out of the park with our two counselors. They took that whole assembly and they just did it. I had no, you know, like I got the list of what they were going to do, but they just took it and it was phenomenal. So it was awesome for three newbies to get up there and do that in front of that many kids.
Good stuff. And so if the board wants to sign it to read in their pajamas.
Again, I'll share.
Or you can wear clothes. It doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be pajamas. But they're really great. I mean, there's a couple of teachers that have done it in their classroom, many more have done it from home. And it is just a really, really, really sweet thing. And a lot of people commenting about how their kids enjoy listening to a story read by someone from school. So it's good stuff.
Middle school.
Middle school. Can you name one? I'm not sure. Dan Norman has had some health issues. He's not been to school yet since the school year started with kids. He is improving and soon to be out of the hospital, if not already out. He underwent a procedure, but he's recovering and hopes to be back then maybe the first week of October. We'll see. In the meantime, we do have a substitute dean of students, Mr. Jeffrey Krull, who comes to us from Sparta. He's a retired middle school principal. So Jeff is sitting in while Dan is mending. We do at the middle school, we use PBIS as our framework and we call it the Tiger Wave. One thing we changed last year and then we're going to continue this year is every month we do a golden ticket drawing. And a golden ticket is earned by students by turning in 10 regular Tiger tickets. And when you turn in 10 Tiger tickets, you get one golden ticket. And you take that golden ticket and you put it into the box in the office and then we draw one name the first week of every month. And the ticket now has come to be a service learning type or a volunteer activity, which is really cool. Students have gone shopping during Project Christmas to buy presents for those students in need. They've gone to the animal shelter to work. This month, what students are going to do, the name drawn will get one friend. And then the friend, the two friends get to go out to eat for lunch. And then they have, they'll go, they'll make a tie blanket. And the tie blanket will be donated to one of the local nursing homes. So, I mean, it's more, we used to do candy and money and all this stuff. But it's, you know, give the kids some credit. They really rose to the occasion when it came to doing some neat volunteering things. And it's really, really very neat and touching how the kids would really get into that and get engaged in doing the learning opportunities or the service learning opportunities. Today, we started our universal screener testing to kind of get a dipstick of where kids are in math, reading, literacy, arts. And that will run for the next two to three weeks. That's eye ready. Eye ready is we used to have ACT Aspire, we had Star Test and Maps and others. So the teachers selected eye ready with the help of Steph Briggan and really excited about using that, getting the data and using the data to improve instruction and student learning. And speaking of instruction, like Tom and Chris were saying, instructional coaches. At the middle school, we are fortunate to have Peggy Black and associate. Peggy is from Brookfield area, retired educator herself. And she is coming to the middle school several times throughout the course of the year to work with teachers on literacy arts and social studies, science and those areas. And it's pretty exciting because the teachers and Peggy and I have great conversations before and after the classroom visits. And that feedback is very important to teachers and they like to hear what they can do to improve. And I'm learning from Peggy and Steph, some really good things to look for in the classroom and some good questions to ask. So we're up and running. Any questions? I'd be happy to entertain anything, otherwise that's it. But middle school, thanks.
High school, I would count you done from your focus unless you have other things you'd like to share.
Sure.
All right.
We started with the year with we are welcoming as our theme for the VRF team. Shortly on Facebook, you should start to see how the students each decorated their classroom door to be welcoming, but also their theme for their group. Last year, we did videos where they all tried to introduce their teams in a short story form. This year, it's just a picture of their door. And that's going to be shared on social media and we're going to be asking for the community to vote who's got the best welcoming idea or whatever. So we certainly encourage you to do that when it comes out later this week. When school started, this year we went to start with lessons and learning and integrate your classroom rules and your syllabus and those kind of discussions throughout the week rather than everybody getting that same hit in every class, eight times in a row over two days. And that was pretty well-received. More than three teachers personally to me said the day went fast. It didn't drag on and so it was more energizing for the students and the teachers. So it was a good day. Any questions from you?
Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. I'm good. All right, thank you.
I have nothing for WASB unless we have the conference coming up that we're hosting.
October 22nd is when we are hosting the regional and I really hope that all of you have put that on your calendar. So it would be great to have our whole local board represented there. So October 22nd.
Do we need to let somebody know or how?
We will.
Are you assuming that we're all?
I was hoping, but not assuming. So I'm assuming, Marty, you'll still have to register them like you do otherwise. So she'll send something out to all of you asking for that confirmation from you.
Conference workshop?
So there was Mary Jo Raisanowski was at something that they did a whole education piece around teacher mobility and teacher turnover. And so there were two documents that she shared and I put them in the packet just today I got them. But I will put them in next month's packet for you just to read through. It shows you some national trends as well as some statewide trends on the turnover rates. And so that does not have any local. I will add the comparisons that they have nationally and statewide. I will add our local data so that you have that comparison or frame of reference to look at as well. So that came from her recent conference at WSB.
Are there any future agenda items that we would like, what we would like to see? About this time? Maybe motion for a chair? Voted in favor? You said second.
I said second.
That's what I heard.
Voted in favor?
Starts with him.
Any opposed?
Thanks for your time, everyone. Much appreciated.